So please do that, and I'd also like to call the committee to order. And this is November third, twenty twenty five, for the City of Michigan's Highway Council meeting in the first quarter of business, I'd like to ask that you join me for a bunch of reasons. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, with its standing white flag, into the soul with which we stand. So welcome, ladies and gentlemen, as well as folks that are watching later on in on our YouTube video. I'd like to start out with introductions. I'm Lisa Wayland. I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Peter Vickery, Brian Yelisi, Brian Cover, and the rest of you in absent this evening. And then staff representative speaking, Alan Charlesy, he is our City of Michigan W S D. Then we have Derek Kneers, who is our Public Works Director, and then Paul Baumert, who is our Assistant City Administrator. To my right, I have Chancellor Crowell, who is our City Administrator, Brian Grimm, who was our Finance Director, and Abel, who was our Community Development Director, and then Craig Sclanders, who is our Chief of Police. I have just a couple items that I'd like to switch, if I could, on our agenda. So first, I'd like to take item six, A and B, and switch those around so that we do item B first and item A second. And then Senator Anne Johnson Stewart is going to be joining us this evening. She will not be able to be here until about seven o'clock, so I'm gonna just move this special presentation down after our public hearing, if she's here by then. Otherwise, we'll just keep moving her down until she gets here. And it should be sometime right around seven o'clock. If that's okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you, Mr. Vickery, and their second. Thank you, Mr. Grimm, Governor, I think it's Brian, don't say Brian, I'm sorry. If I am on jet lag, I'm just gonna need to clear. I got home late last night after twenty-four hours anyhow. So with that, favorite signified by, all those opposed, motion passes, five oh. So we'll move on to the agenda items. Are there any ones you wish to remove? There are none. They consist of: A, approve our work session meeting minutes from, we don't have the dates.
October twentieth.
Thank you. October twentieth, twenty twenty five. B, approve our city council regular meeting minutes, also from October twentieth, twenty five. C is a resolution to approve claims. D is a resolution to accept the improvements and authorize final payment for the twenty twenty three street improvement project, yay, finally. E is approve our building inspection, where the technical services agreement with Victoria, also another great one. F is approve our temporary liquor license for the North West Town Alliance for the holiday tree lighting event, made of the Comba. And then G is approve City Administrators naturally monitoring events on municipal liability. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda items A through C? Thank you, Mr. Vickery, and their second. Thank you, Mr. Vickery, and their second. Any questions? There are none. All of the favorites signify by five, five, opposed, motion passes, five oh. So we're gonna move on to our public hearing. I'm gonna start off, this is a public hearing, and we have Todd waiting here with us, a speaking from Eller and Associates. Welcome, Mr. Hagan. Nice to see you again. Maybe we need to just do a brief explanation for the public as to why we're doing this public hearing. It's for our bond that we're really issuing, for seventy-five bond. If there's a difference between four seventy-five bond or four twenty-nine bond that we usually do. Maybe you could just do a quick overview for the people watching, will kind of know why we're doing that.
Thank you, Mayor. Nice to see you too. Council members, staff, hi, Hagan, I'm Mr. Drive here. Tonight, thanks for the great weather, but some people still have their axes up. So yeah, tonight we have a public hearing. I want to call it Street Reconstruction Plan. I like to call it Street Reconstruction Financing Plan. It's a five-year plan, but really it's one extended year, four-year twenty twenty-six street improvement project, number oh-one twenty-six, plus the West Edge Boulevard. You folks have seen the plan, the draft plan, it's the maximum amount of two million four fifty. What's different about this approach as opposed to just a regular general obligation improvement bond? Is that I think we're a little short of one percent assessment threshold of four twenty-nine bond. So what we do then is switch over to a different state law authority, which is a general obligation Street Reconstruction Plan bond, and it's a hundred percent favorable from property factors, but on an annual basis, we'll use that by the special assessments that come in that are too low for improvement bond, but they're just fine for this. So we're getting at the same financing, just in a different way. So we've got to follow the best state law, and that's what I'm here for, and the bond number is here for, and that's what we're doing. Figuring this stuff out for you. So that's what we're doing, and it's not uncommon. Assessments trying to meet that one percent threshold is difficult sometimes with these expensive projects, and I get it. So it is nice to have other sort of avenues to get that same bond just in a different way. So now I'm having to try to lower that threshold at some point. Yeah, I think they put a lot of that, a little bit sweet to do at some point. So that's what we've got tonight. You'll see on the plan, I mean, it's a short and sweet sort of plan. Really, the only thing you need, the loan limitation, is follow the three percent net debt test in there and see that it's so under this particular authority, unlike improvement bond, it's exempt from three percent. And that test, this one is subject to that and plays off of your estimated market value, which is someone up of three billion dollars, multiply that by three percent, and you've got maybe one, almost maybe two million of authority. You've already are using four million of that for other projects that are just subject to net debt, which is due to the property tax that did gain the bond issue. Plus this bond issue, you've got like eighty-four million of that, so no problem. That's some cities right on the edge. We've got, we have capacity, so it's a good tool to use. And we're using it, so hopefully that's an explanation for the cost. So we have the whole public hearing, like we are, and we're doing it to look for a funding line process, so we want the public hearings for these projects to finance them. And then, and this one's a little bit different too. So after tonight's public hearing, if you approve the preliminary, we're going to approve the conditions of the bonds and approving the Street Reconstruction Plan. We can't really do anything until thirty days, probably the first round of the end-up period. So we want to make sure that that ends, and that will end on December third. And then we've also got to make sure that the Street Improvement Project will become a grant, something like that. So you know, make sure to get all of this moving forward and having done that, we thought we had to consider approving those at this, and then we started the bond process. So what do we have to do? After midnight, so if there's any questions, we'll discuss.
And so just a couple things for clarification. We're also going to be issuing with this, in addition to that, we're going to be doing some equipment certification, and wrapping the two together, so we save money on our bond costs. So there's the equipment certificate, and then I believe the lielo project that we're doing as well.
Correct, some of them, I can see that with the security cameras and lielo.
Yeah, so there's a couple other things that we're going to be financing. It'll be in addition to the three point three four five million, that's just for the roads. But we're gonna save money because we're gonna wrap it all together. We're also gonna wrap the water infrastructure bonds in with this later. Well, it's gonna be with this at the same time, so they're gonna be wrapped together, again, saving money on the bond or issuing on the bond cost. But again, just making it clear that the water bond that we will quote is going to be paid for out of water user fees and those bad buckets, but the other portion of this bond is going to be paid out of general fund. So I just want to make that clear. Is there any question on that?
Are those separate bonds, or is it just essentially legally provided, good price for us to? Yeah, good question. We can issue one bond with three or four purposes. Four purposes, questions. So they're, like the mayor said, too, each little purpose has its own sort of stream, related in a lot of the process issuance and other things that go along with it, so they're easy to track. So it's gonna look like issuing three or four bonds or whatever, but it's all been bundled, each one. So it's a larger bond issue, it's gonna be twenty years. It's all a bit, right, and smaller bonds through all of the year, which, which we could, but just like the progress commercial, right, we found a six and so. We'll try to do something like that.
But the other, the other thing that they were doing is we're looking at remaining bonding for half, maybe approximately half of the water infrastructure bond right now, or the cost right now, because we're gonna wait and see what happens at the state. We might get bond, might get some money from the state. So if we do, then we don't need this labor bond for the water infrastructure. The other thing on that bond, the project is going to be taking about two years to complete. We don't need all that money upfront, so we don't want to be paying that interest rate already upfront. That also spurs the bond, and it gives us a little more wiggle in terms of cash. Is that maybe a good explanation?
Yeah, and I think that if that's what the council wants to do, I think, yeah, right now in the packet, it's sort of shown as one bond. And I think we've talked about the pros and cons of doing one bond, you know, twenty-six, twenty-seven million, just all in early twenty-six, or breaking it up into like, you know, thirteen million now, and then see what we get from the, if we have anything from the state, and then maybe another thirteen, or hopefully less, you know, or something later. And I think Todd could work to structure that too. We'd have a, like a twenty twenty-six A bond that would have like those three purposes, right? You know, the streets, the women's certificate, and then the part of the water, or whatever. And then you do the rest in twenty twenty-seven, as the rest of the water treatment, might be the best way to go based on what we're bad. If the council agrees or thinks so, or.
And that's good too, and kind of have to get into weeds, but also because we're issuing over five million dollars. If we play this correctly and get that two-year kind of spend on them, figure it out, we'll be able to hit this IRS threshold of spending certain amounts at some times, but with the two-year period, we can keep all of our investment revenues on this group, so it's not moving about the investment in these two. We probably guaranteed to deal about the bonds we should do, but make some money out of mine.
And we're not, we don't think about that.
They're following the arbitrage rules, basically, right?
We're interested in the bond proceeding right now, and we know most of the bank rate has come down, but it's still pretty respectable. Getting that, making some money from it, so it's not a charge and a good market rate. So, so I think that's what we try to do, is try to find the right nips here with the spend-ons and, you know, issue too much and market it, pretty much, pretty much, too. So I think that's, we've got a lot of options. We have, you know, with the, excuse me, that was a word. Water, regular, funds versus property. So the bondholder and purchaser and the broker dealer, they see that general obligation in front of it, and they see a bond rating, plus a couple eight-year scale, and they're just gonna look at them and figure it out. So underneath that is staff, right, and for the body, make sure it was carved out correctly. And, you know, wires and payments, equipment, you know, property guys not paying for the water. So we can split those up and have separate purposes, like three bonds and one. So there's a process issuance, so when they're secure, it's all collated for all the three, for self purposes, which saves you money pretty quick, because if you issue them in separate series over separate times of the year, it's just a brand new bond issue every single time, the cost to everybody, right, starting from square one. Even if it's, if it's space out more than three months in between, it could be, it could be occurring those costs to from the very beginning, so that's what we're trying to do. So, yeah, when you go those under the market, you see the twister, you see the rating, you see the general obligation bonds, it's pretty large, and they'll just get off of that.
Maybe just for logistics, so you don't need to have like a twenty twenty-six A, B, and C bond. It's all twenty twenty-six A, just three revenue streams, or potentially, you know, multiple revenue streams, or whatever, so.
You don't need to have, so the Geo bond for the water treatment, we only have a public hearing, but because we're bundling with, with the road project, you have to have a public hearing, whether it's a road project or our general project, but if it includes a settlement, but it does need a twenty percent threshold. So that's why we have to have a public hearing. Basically, you don't need, you can vote, and you can vote Geo bonds if you're not doing public that, doesn't.
On your water sewer, correct?
Yeah.
Assessment bond, like you put my bond to part twelve, I don't know, even twenty percent.
Okay.
So, yeah, and then with hearings, right, and then the equipment, typically, that's easier. So they're all a little bit different, this does.
Right, it isn't a twenty percent.
Yeah, it's just, it's just.
And then.
We've got options.
And then we're still following the twenty, the four twenty-nine process in conjunction with four seventy-five, correct? So that's why we have the multiple public hearings.
I just wanted to make it clear, so you might say, well, why are we doing this now? We didn't do it before, whatever. It's just, it's interesting.
And we did that back in the day, off in twelve issues, so, yeah. Yeah, we had the four seventy-five.
So if there, are any other questions? All right, if there are none, then what I'm gonna do is open the public hearing right now, so we need to begin. And opening the public hearing, there is nobody here in front of public hearing, so again, I can really close the public hearing and take it back to council, and what we do need to do is, it's a resolution in our hand to adopt a Street Reconstruction Plan and provide the necessary approval for the issuance of the bonds. Is there a motion to that again? Thank you, Mr. Vickery, and their second. Thank you, Mr. Governor. Any further questions? There are none. All of the favorites signify by five, five, opposed, motion passes, I think five oh, I should say four oh. So moving on, so thank you very much, Mr. Hagan, and we'll see you again, I'm sure. All right, we're gonna move on now, different items, and we're gonna start with B, which is a resolution to support for the acquisition of sixty-three hundred Painted Road by N C W D. We do have a couple of people from N C W D here this evening. I'm first gonna hand it over to David. Do you want to say anything, because it was brought to the planning commission? So I'll give it to you, you can give us an overview, and then, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, by the way, members of council. As the mayor stated, we give a resolution of support for the purchase of sixty-three hundred Painted Road by the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. The property owners that live there did reach out to the watershed district and ask them if they were interested in purchasing the property. They understood and knew the significance of their property and where it sits within the sub watershed of the Painted Creek Watershed District, if you will. The parcel is near some of what the district does own now for land holdings, and it also has been identified, the twenty-seven water management plan, as a significant area of importance. As we all know, Painters Creek eventually leads to Jennings Bay. Jennings Bay is on Lake Minnetaka. As we all know, it's one of the impaired water bodies within Lake Minnetaka, Halsted Bay being the other one. So that is the significant importance of the location of this property. There's a heavy load of phosphorus that gets let out out of Painters Creek into Jennings Bay, and the watershed district will be looking to for future projects with this property in order to help reduce that phosphorus that goes into Jennings Bay. As the mayor stated, this did go to the planning commission on October twenty-seventh. The commission unanimously recommended that the council go ahead and move forward with that, with enough support for the purchase of the property. And as the mayor stated, we do have representatives from the district here. If you have any questions for them and staff, it's also available for questions.
And just kind of for clarification, FYI, they don't, they don't need city approval, I believe, by my state statute. So very simple, if you recall, I think, if I'm not mistaken, it just, this is kind of a courtesy on their part.
Correct, and I think both agencies over the years with previous insurances have set forth policies to go through this step, to look for support from the local government. The Park District does, they really need a per state statute. They do need compliance with our planning agency, with our comprehensive plan. So the Park District is a little different than a watershed district, but per policy for both agencies, this is the process that we can follow.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? And by the way, I have motion, here are a couple people here.
Just to confirm, so if the sale is approved, this would remove the property test certificates from basically the building, right?
Correct, thank you. And it's not thinking about the senior, just, you know, but the other thing is also, we can still ask them, so if we ever do a road project, they would still be a fed. So they, it's a little different with the thousands versus the property taxes. So they don't pay property taxes. They do have to be in the assessment, should there be an assessment?
It should be, how many, it's sixty-five dollars.
Dark portion, just fifteen.
I just wanted to make it clear, my God, unfortunately, I'm just, yes, I hope, but, all right. So with that, I feel if you want to come forward and introduce yourself, please.
Mayor Wayland, council members, Gail Sormack, Planner Project Manager, Department of District. I'm happy to be here tonight and answer all of any questions, but I can start with just a little bit of a primer on how the acquisition kind of came to our knowledge and kind of what we see as the near term and long-term plans to the site. So as Mr. Abel mentioned, the property seller team actually reached out to us in late July. The property had been sitting on the market for a few months, I think since late May, early June. And the seller had recalled the watershed district's interest from about twenty years ago, when we tried to acquire a conservation easement over the property, and that did move forward. So here we are, twenty years later. Staff began kind of dusting off the original merits of the site and looking at how the project map fits within our support strategy. And one of those fairly things, of course, is reaching out to staff and understanding how the property is in alignment and supports city goals. One exciting thing is we luckily had picked off some watershed diagnostic work this year, so we were able to kind of take a really look at what the data is telling us. And we're really seeing that upstream of this property is where a majority of that phosphorus is coming in. And so this specific site is positioned in the watershed, it serves to provide opportunities for that regional water quality treatment for Jennings Bay and Tiamon Bay. As far as the short-term plans for the site, it does have quite a few older structures on it. I think the house is dating back to eighteen ninety. We do plan to demo all the structures and sub-structures on the site, subdick prep wells, with the exception of the newer full shed that sits on the property, and then do some regrading, native seeding in those areas to keep the site in a temporary conservation state, just to give us time to really work through the monitoring of the watershed, engage with our sub watershed partners in kind of our next point in seven plan that we just really picked off, putting in motion, and then give us time to really do that feasibility study on kind of what the potential project would look like for the site. Long-term, I think the site has a lot of great features that set it up around support strategies. In our implementation plan, the site itself has about fifteen hundred eight of creek footage, which is about a third of a mile, and it's adjacent to publicly owned land between the district and the city through Painted Creek Estates Park there. So it's public ownership on both sides of the channel. We see that as a great opportunity to restore the creek and wetlands to that reach. And then given its regional position in the watershed, we'll be exploring how we could potentially treat the incoming phosphorus that's come through that site before it comes downstream. So we'll, of course, as we get into those conversations, be keeping in close coordination with staff on how it can even support future opportunities for recreation to the site, to some passive recreation from often part three states. Any questions?
I just heard that there's a lot of phosphorus, you know, the plant on site are just carrying the plant, follow.
We've got a few ideas kind of swirling in our heads, so we're seeing that a majority of the phosphorus that comes through there is dissolved. So it's a little trickier, it kind of narrows your options for the treatment and removal. Some of the options, just given the nature of the site, would be pumping water potentially out of the creek and doing that, some of that phosphorus removal up on the upland portion, there's blood minsters of uplands on the site. That could be a sand iron filter, it could be something like an alum injection facility, so there's a lot of potential to explore there. But so what are we to say exactly?
Is there a strategic plan on land acquisitions around that creek?
Yeah, I think to be more strategic as we get ahead of our watershed commitment plan. You know, twenty years ago, we had a program kind of designed for just acquiring parcels all over the watershed, really for conservation and conservation only. I think now our acquisition strategies are really targeted around where we can put capital projects and water quality improvements. So we need to see kind of that multi-benefits with the water quality project before, I think the district would be interested in acquiring parcels.
Do you ever, when you do a project, so let us just say you just do determine what type of a project you're doing, and you need X number of acres or square feet, whatever it may be, and then put a conservation over that area of the parcel? And then, and then we thought, who's selling it then, for private use?
Yeah, that's a great question. That's something we've touched on with our board. If there was interest from the city, I think, once we get into feasibility and look at, you know, of those eleven point four acres, what would we need to build out a capital project, what would we need to maintain? I think there would be willingness to explore, you know, putting part of the parcel back on.
So we would have to decide that, no, we would just say, you know, either those did, we'd be interested in that. I think it would be kind of a win-win for everybody, essentially, if you're thinking about future purchases of Andy, Barry, and Krista. I think we really want to be a deep dive in a really good book on that question option.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, and I think we can weigh that against what opportunities we see from a public amenity standpoint, providing passive recreation to the site in conjunction with some of the by, parcels and preparation areas.
All right, any other questions?
The one, one kind of question, I got a couple from Kathleen, she's not able to be here. Just kind of, how do you guys settle on a purchase price? How do you get there? Do you use an appraisal? How does that all work?
Sure, yeah, part of our policy associated with acquisition is that we do obtain an appraisal. So once there was, you know, the check-in with city staff and from the briefing with our board, we did engage in appraisal. The listing price was eight hundred and fifty on this parcel. We negotiated an eight hundred and twenty-five purchase price, so kind of we're in the middle of our appraisal value and then looking for asking price, so that's part of our process, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, so what they're asking for is a resolution on support for the acquisition of sixty-three hundred Painted Road in the acquisition of five hundred eighty. Thank you, Mr. Vickery, is there a second?
Five.
Thank you, Mr. Governor. Any further questions, comments? There are none. All of the favors signify by five, five, opposed, motion passes, four oh. Thank you very much, and we look forward to more information in time of five. So now I'm gonna move back to our special presentation. I see that Senator Anne Johnson Stewart is here. First of all, I want to say welcome, Senator. Thank you for taking time out of your, I know, very busy schedule to be here. And again, I just. And again, I just want to say, we here, we're sitting here at the city DM. We are not wearing our Democrat or our Republican hat. We are here nonpartisan because we represent all the people in our community. And I really want to focus on the issues that pertain to our city and issues that we have an interest in. And I think we gave you a few ideas, but maybe the other council members might have a few more ideas. I'm hoping you have information, of course, on body and, and how we can get money and how we have to do that. We also want to talk a little bit about Highway seven, basing coalition and corridor. And I also want to talk about any potential bill that might be coming to the House and Senate regarding planning and building and housing issues that would issue that session. And then maybe one other question, if you happen to know, is there any talk about a special session yet this fall? That's why I know so far, and I may have a couple of questions regarding fire districts. And we might come up with a couple of other ones, but these are ones that really are near and dear to our hearts and video and official. But I hope we can have the conversation on that. And thank you very much for coming.
My pleasure. Thank you, Mayor. So I'm Senator Ann Johnson Stewart. I only know Jasper and Lisa. So, I'm Claudia. I'm happy to get together with any of you if you have time or interest. I was a state senator in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, representing Senate District forty four, which was Clinton, Minnetoka and Woodland. And then during redistricting, I was districted with Kelly Morrison, who received the DFL endorsement and went on to win. She served for two years. I continue to be really involved with local infrastructure issues because that's my area of expertise and really the area where I spend most of my time. I'm a civil engineer and I, I am a civil engineer. I teach at, at the University of Minnesota. And when I was first elected, I had organized a group called the Infrastructure Alliance. And so even in those two years that I wasn't serving, I continued to try to go support for things like bonding and highway funding and so on. So I'm back in the legislature now with this new district that extends, as you know, on the way out to the county line. And so Minatrista and St. Bonnie are my furthest west constituents and I really have enjoyed getting to know Lisa Franklin. And I'm sorry, Mayor, I'll try to be more respectful or more fancy. Fancy, yeah. Jasper and I have spent quite a bit of time together. He's really quite motivated and interested in understanding water rates and water infrastructure, so we had to work together on quite a few things. I really, I will take as much time as you give me. I teach at the U, so I'm happy to talk for two or three hours. That's kind of willing to do that. I have no idea, when he's taught on for a living, it's like, no big deal. Today I was at Transportation Alliance and they only gave me fifteen minutes, which was for some people an eternity. For me, I barely got the introduction out. The most important thing I want to cover, and again, I'm happy to come back, Mayor, is this one pager that Jasper and I worked on. He did the majority of the work, but we did go back and forth. So that as we present this one pager, sorry, only two pages, to the Bonding Committee, what I know the Bonding Committee is looking for is covered in here. So he's done a great job and I want to thank him for that. I am on the Bonding Committee and while I'm not the vice chair, I am kind of the ex, the kind of pretend vice chair. Senator Fabius relied on me quite a bit. As we toured the state, we don't really have time to see every single community that needs bonding dollars. So that's why I had Minatrista and some of the other communities in our district put this together so that we were prepared. And in fact, after Senator Fabius saw this, we did not get on the tour, but she is now wanting to schedule a meeting, which I think is a good thing. Really, I coached Jasper on what we're looking for here. Really, the Bonding Committee this year, let me just give you a very brief history. Last year, we were told by the governor that we only had seven hundred million dollars to provide in bonding. For those of you that don't know, Minnesota is one of the states that helps local governments fund their infrastructure projects that have regional significance, even though we go straight a little bit from that. But they must have regional significance. And we usually try to fund up to half of the bonding or the project cost. And last year, we were told we couldn't do any local projects. Now, we did funnel a lot of money into what's called the Public Facilities Authority. And I know that Minatrista is in that list and is pursuing funding. However, the reality for this Senate district is we really have too high a median household income and home values to score very high on that list, which would allow for grant funding. So this year, so last year, we did not do a lot of, very many local projects. Really, the only ones we funded were for that PFA. This year, though, we have one point three billion, or at least we've been told by the governor. And so we're going to really focus on small communities. And we're frankly going to focus on water and sewer infrastructure. I've been needing a Senator Fabius for the entire last year. Wasn't elected to really prioritize that. And so that's what we're focusing on. There's other communities around here that need road projects. We're asking for money for road projects that are being dug up because of the water and the sewer infrastructure. Minatrista, of course, you guys are well aware, you need your infrastructure. You need the water pipes to go to your very kind of northern area. And so that's one of the requests. So this is what you guys are asking for. I, again, I think Jasper did a great job. I really wanted him to focus on the fact that you guys have an entire section of, entire township of land. You guys are six miles, like six miles. You are six times as big as, you know, St. Bonnie or Excelsior.
Thirty two square miles, just, just.
Say again?
Thirty two square miles, square miles.
Yeah, six by six, right, minus the little bit. But anyway, I really wanted to emphasize the fact that you guys have to extend pretty far up. Every foot of height, of course, costs a lot of money. And so that's what we're asking for. So I will pause right there. If you have any questions around bonding, I'm really going to push for Minatrista to get at least some portion of their project funded through the state. These are grants, so general obligation bonds, which I don't think Minatrista has ever gotten before. Those are, that's just, that's just state funded infrastructure.
Then just FYI, we never got anything. We never asked for it.
Correct.
This is the first time we're asking. Again, the first time that we're hoping to get some funding.
Yep.
Hopefully that will go itself higher than others.
Yeah, and we are ready to give that message. So I just heard from Senator Fabius today that we're going to put us on a Zoom bonding tour. And so we'll be hearing from you. You know, you weren't here, we were at a town last week.
Really?
High weeks ago. Yeah, so don't feel like we're going around you. It's just we've been conversing and getting prepared. So the bonding tour was last week. We went to Excelsior and then to Tonka Beach. But what I have, the rest of the communities in this district put together is this. So that on the bus, we were going from Excelsior to St. Bonnie or to the Tonka Beach, I was able to talk with other communities. So really important to get this because you are going fast as well.
Questions?
When you will find out, maybe as a question? So the, so the process is this. Of course, we don't go back into session until February seventeenth this year. We have a short here, it's a policy here. And we'll be focusing on those kinds of things. We will get our numbers from Office of Management and Budget in early twenty twenty six. Governor will play around with those numbers a little bit, but again, we're expecting one point three billion dollars. And then I am talking fast because I know you have other stuff to ask. So in case you think I'm rushing, so we can get to other stuff. We won't know until the very last day of session if the bonding will pass. It's usually kind of held hostage by all four offices. So the House and the Senate Republicans and the House and the Senate Democrats will bargain with it because general obligation bonds must be funded by a super majority. So both Democrats and Republicans have to vote for it. And so oftentimes it's used as kind of leverage. So you will not find out if you got any money until literally the last minute. And I told everybody this, don't give up. If you, if you, I'm sure at that time, I'll be speaking with the mayor and saying, you're in, you're not in, you're in, you're not in. And that is exactly how it goes. And so that is one of my missions is to take the politics out of bonding because I really believe everybody should be able to drink water. Comes from their tap and flush their toilets and get good results. And so really that's our focus is on soil and water. And I, I'm, I'm really working hard to make it now.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions, we've done water district bonding, right? Right, so next, what are the next big items, do you think, coming up in the next session? Regarding, is it going to be again, the housing and planning involved in those decisions?
I think it will be housing. We don't have, what, right now, Patty, you guys have Andrew Myers. My other partner in the house is Patty Aikum. And both Patty and I live in Minnetoka, where they have a full time person working on housing issues and zoning issues. So we are really leveraging that and we are working mostly Patty to help come up with some strategies so that we can come into session, actually pre-session, with some objective, or with some objective legislation that Patty and I can vote for. Last time around, I stood on the state, state local government committee. We're the ones that had to pass the housing bill through and we voted down. I believe in affordable housing, absolutely a hundred percent. But I had heard from all fifteen mayors and many of our city staffs that the policies that were put forward in the legislation, which just weren't affordable. Really frankly, well, affordable, I mean, for, you know, some of our communities where they're fully built out, where the land is prohibited with expensive, I mean, you cannot, I can't afford a house in many of the communities that are in my district. And there has been a lot of work being professional. So the land implies that I'm preclusive of even investigating affordable housing. So what we're doing is we're coming up with some alternatives. I sit on the Bonding Committee and what we know is that there's many communities that want to, want to develop in like areas that are rezoned voluntarily by the communities. Rochester, for example, has a large industrial area that they want to redevelop with affordable housing units. But the sewer pipe going to it is big enough for the building that used to be there, not for the eighteen hundred affordable housing that they want to build. So cities are being handcuffed by the existing infrastructure, whether it's the roads. Mostly it's the water and sewer, frankly. Frankly, mostly it's the sewer. I mean, if you're going to build, move in thirty six hundred, five thousand people, you need to be able to transport their sewage. And so this is one reason why this should not be political, right? Like everybody creates sewage and drinks water. So I'm working right now to enhance that funding option. So the communities that do want to do affordable housing development, they're not, they're, they're not hindered by their existing infrastructure. So they have extra bonding money and extra funding so they can explore those options. So that communities like Tonka Beach, or I'm sorry, Tonka Bay or Minnetoka Beach, they don't have anywhere to put affordable housing, you know.
I think our biggest issue is the bills that were voted out this year. The bill that's been held up and it was just pretty out of all of ours only can claim. And, and it would basically throw out a comprehensive plan, which we spent a lot of time creating and a lot of money creating it. We're just kind of throwing it out. And then the other thing that we need to add to that other is also not just the sewer and water infrastructure, but then there's also additional policing, additional staffing, additional fire. And in fire, I mean, how can you get fire trucks on these tiny little boats that they want to put in? So all of those things considered is can be a huge competitor. And really what we look at, we want affordable housing, we want. But what these bills really were was just a taking and just doing nothing other than mining pockets of developers and builders. And we want to work with them. We want to have them in our community, but we need to work with them rather than having them dictate to us what we can and can't do with our community. Because I think that's why we were, we were elected to represent the people here. Because I think in your next session, keep us appraised on the bills and we will also keep appraised with that because we're very much doing that. But I know that we're even in the same city, also very much involved in that as well. So we'll, we'll be, we'll be hearing what's going on and you'll be hearing from us. So then you know how to represent the people, so that are in your district. So we appreciate that and I know you did that last year. And I know Andrew Myers will be hearing from us and he knows that and he's aware of that. And I believe that our representatives will be representing us. We greatly appreciate that.
It's my pleasure and I, I do understand and I've spent time, lessons I, you know, like with Ben, getting our mirrors together regularly, but once, once a month. And then sometimes on the off times, there's other groups that are meeting around housing, around property taxes, around electric, or around them, electric bikes. And those are really our three top priorities right now. So I am available and I do understand your issues and I feel exactly.
I see you guys, the challenge, you're putting out six miles square. So a lot of it is rural and so it's going to be just a part of it. Part of the, yeah.
That's correct, and you should be the ones that decide how your community is developed and where development takes place. So I really support all of you. I really call you, yeah. Abel and I saw members, so yeah, you have to, we can. It's a lot more efficient to call me directly than go to my staff. And I know she's watching this and she's probably scrunching, but.
The only other big issue that pertains directly to our city as well as a number of cities here, we've been working on a fire partnership. We live behind the pound, the fund, Minatrista, of course, and Esprit Heart. One of the issues we run into is the, there's two different fire departments and two different relief funds, retirement funds. And to try and balance that out and bring them together is very, very costly. And now I know through all the state, there's a lot of fire departments that want to converge or want to do changes or else districts. And so that's one issue that's come up in our discussions and our negotiations. And that's something I think the state should look at, how they can get help to bridge that, that funding gap, if you will. But then the other one, the other issue is, when district, if you create a fire district, the one and only formula that you can use is a hundred percent market value. And I think there might be, maybe us included or other communities around here that might be interested in a different formula if we ever wanted to create a string. And that would be made a fifty fifty one, fifty market value, fifty service call. So if, if there's something the state could do to change that, that law that says we have to do only that one formula. Because again, every community is different and every GPA or every district might be different. And it needs to be a little bit different. So having one formula that fits everybody in the entire state is a little difficult. So keep that in mind, if that can come up. I think we would really appreciate some of the, we were giving that.
And there in response, I would say, it's not a matter of if it comes up. If we wanted to come up, we can investigate that. I know Orinama, Long Lake, and Watertown and, or maybe it's Maple Plain, not sure. I think it's Maple Plain. They're very interested in that topic. And I think just by nature of the size of our communities and how involved we are, I think that would be a good one for us to talk with seniors and maybe go in. I think right now, yeah, because I know it relates to both equipment, but then also retirement benefits and logistics as well.
Thank you. Walk about with each other, and anything else? We don't want to take that much. And I actually thank you for the mayor's meetings. I remember the, I've been to all of them, but really appreciate your time and the attendance to drawing, we really appreciate, so.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I'll continue to work with you in that and my colleagues on Highway seven. That's something I'm very familiar with and something that I've followed. So mayor, if you have any specific issues or if you have constituents that wanna talk about that, I'll add my way.
All right, thank you again.
Yeah, I'll come back anytime. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We, we know. But thank you for saying.
All right. Okay, um, so now I'll go back, uh, to our business items and our last business item is the eighty twenty-two quarter, um, nineteen. And this is for communication and outreach assistant, um, assistant related to the water utility changes. I believe, um, we talked about doing some sort of mass, if you will, a lot of communication regarding the rates and regarding the change from quarterly to monthly. And this will take some educating the public and informing them. And Jasper, do you wanna add or quick overview or?
Yeah, I definitely can, um, Madam Mayor, thank you, uh, for letting me talk about this a little bit. Basically what this will give us, um, from a staff side and that's, you know, me, Gary, Paula, is just another tool in the toolbox to help communicate a lot of these changes that are, we're talking about doing. Um, one with the water treatment plant construction. So one big aspect is we're gonna have a project page or this would allow us to have a project website where they're updating it with pictures from onsite, like almost immediately, just to kind of keep everybody in the loop as far as the progress, where we're at, what to expect, um, with the plant. Um, that's one big piece. The other pieces are, um, social media posts, website, or I said website, um, newsletter, uh, and then, yeah, the, uh, a kind of defined social media structure post. So it, it's, 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 you know, eighteen thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, not to exceed that, but what it is, is it's a task order. We don't have to spend all of that, but when we have a, a newsletter that needs to go out or a, you know, social media post, what this will allow us to do is create graphics and, and things like that nature to, to help us communicate.
So let's say, um, they, we, well, we should send out a postcard via snail mail. You know, um, they'll create the design and the wording of that. And then will they print it or they give it to us and then we print it?
So good question. So we would be, um, we're in charge of all of the, um, printing and, and things of that nature, um, to get those out. So, um, we're, city will handle mailing lists, printing postage, hosting notifications, uh, bill adjustment, social media posting. So they'll, they'll prepare, they would, so in a social media posting situation, they'd help prepare what the post would be. Paula would then post it, cause she's the, the social media person. So, um, really it's just another kind of technical support piece to help communicate what we're doing. Um, and it's, it's a lot. I think you maybe sense a little, I don't know, nervousness, but with the monthly billing change and with the, the, um, you know, the plant going online and, and, and bill, you know, rates going up significantly, um, likely over the next few years, you know, making sure that we're able to maybe step up our communication with the residents to, to try to head off any, um, hostile calls or people saying they don't know, they didn't know, or we had no idea. You know, we're, we're just trying to do our best, um, to communicate and this is one of the pieces that we think can help.
Isn't one of the main benefits of they probably help cities do this before, and this is sort of our first time going through it?
They do, they have, they have experience in that sense of, um, especially with the utility rates. And they were one of the, you know, I think you remember from maybe the last meeting or the meeting before, uh, you know, we kind of initially maybe a month or so ago started talking about all the different changes. And they, they had some real hesitancy of doing everything by January one, you know, with the utility bills moving from quarterly to monthly, um, with the plant going online and with, or not online, but, you know, being awarded. And then also, uh, with the utility rates, you know, what we're looking at as far as increases. So just a lot of things that maybe to overwhelm folks, um, so they do have experience.
We don't have to spend dollars. Our, they, we, we, we don't be the drivers. We can say, well, we want a postcard to go out now, or we, we want a newsletter, or we want this, but we can be the drivers. I feel like if you want to be informed, you have to be proactive. I don't think the city's sending a bunch of mailers or spending a lot of money on, on your website against people. I think when I wanna know who's a call, a call site or I get on the city website. I think I always say it's great, that's all of my information. I need an information, I'll go to the city website. And everyone in the world uses, you know, uses the internet. So I don't know that we have to do that much, that much more product. Well, the thing is, is we just experienced, we just went through and experienced, um, a whole bunch of residents telling us they can ignore it. And yes, yes, it's people's responsibility to be in the know, but yet we still get people constantly saying, well, I didn't know. You know, why didn't you do this? Why didn't you say this? You know? This is just another way to let everybody know when, why, how. In other words, for instance, the rates, how many people would want to peruse you and go through all of our council meetings and work sessions and listen to, to understand why we're doing the ways that we do. You know, so I think, I think it is so important, so important to do communication with our residents, whether you think it's their responsibility or not. It's also our responsibility, our responsibility to try and communicate as much as we can, our residents, to help them understand why things are happening and, and how it's going to affect them. That's our responsibility too. Right, but we have a website and we also have the ability to help people sign up our Facebook page if they wanna get updates and. I have experience, which we all have, where I saw something on Nextdoor complaining, you know, we all used to storm city hall, like this was a year, like we showed a storm city hall a year ago, of this particular. Actually, so we can go back and forth and argue about whether it's our responsibility or their responsibility. But I think from the city standpoint, when I took office, people were saying, oh, the city never communicates, they don't do this, they don't do that. And one of our biggest, even in our, um, our priorities and our goals and a strategic plan, communicating with our residents is one of our top strategic plans. So if, if that should be, then that needs to come on our strategic plan. But our strategic plan, the civic label is one of the top five is communicating with our residents. That's why we do the newsletter, that's why we have the website, that's why we do, um, the Facebook page. But with this particular thing with the water infrastructure, I can guarantee you that you're gonna have a whole bunch of very angry people if we don't communicate and best we possibly can with them, why we're doing what we're doing and how much is enough. If we don't, I, I'll sit back and I'll, I'll, I'll send them to you because then I'll send them to the website with the explanation. All right. I mean, yeah, not for respect, but how, well, how much is enough? How weekly most far? Everyone, someone's gonna always complain, no matter how much you send. But did you know, but it's all okay, we have a website and we have a newsletter.
Oh, is that a funny question? For us, suddenly there's something after, so some. Just got to know the water treatment back then, buzzing a lot. City, so it's very severe. And it developed and then really I'm still, yeah. Very contentious, uh, being, uh, people just came out because they didn't, they didn't know. They have their, you know, their suspicions. So I, I think it's here for me to. It's, it is, you know, expensive, so we can create the best and relax people. Yeah, there are many files here. If you have a word, you know, that, that, that will come.
Yeah, and one, if I may, um, one touch point that I was here to experience was when we, um, upped the rates and I think Q three of twenty twenty-two, I think it really hit, hit the residents. And I mean, we were, we were inundated, we tried to get out the information through our normal means. Um, and it was quite disruptive to, I think, mostly staff, some city councils. I mean, we got three hundred calls or, or, you know, something like that, which is significantly more. Um, so we're trying to head off that one, you know, because we wanna communicate with the people. You know, they're, they're big, I think for whatever reason, they weren't engaged and they didn't know that the rates were going up. But so we're trying to do everything with this that we can to get the, that information out. So this is, you know, we wanna, if we wanna kind of take it to the next level, this will get us there. Uh, we can do the standard stuff, but I, I'm just, I'm afraid that, that might lead to a lot of questions, a lot of calls, a lot of, you know, stuff that, that could be avoided potentially with this.
Well, the other thing too is even just to update the website, uh, with the information that's, that's accurate and it's clear and concise, um, that, that takes time too. And then also to post on Facebook page and to, you know, all of that takes time. And, um, and all of that takes expertise as well. But I can't tell you how important it is, one, it adds to transparency, it adds to, um, better communication and understanding. And the other thing is it adds to trust. And there is a huge issue when new residents do not trust you. And they don't trust you if you're not talking to them, if you're not telling them what's happening and why you're doing what you're doing. They, they tend to then create, it creates a mistrust or, or well, why didn't you tell them? You know, so I, I can't tell you, but I've done this so many years. I, 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 I'm far more experienced in this than you are. That's why I'm not trying to, you know, honestly undermine your ideas. But I gotta tell you, if you don't do this, you're, you're gonna have staff blowing their hair out and, and they're gonna be inundated with calls and the community is not gonna trust us. And there is so much value in the community trusting us, knowing that we're trying to do the best with them. There's a huge difference, huge difference, right? With what happened ten years ago with what's happening with the, I can't tell you. I, I, it's, yeah, and we don't have to spend the full eighteen thousand. We can, we can draw, we can draw, we can be the drivers. We can see how much we wanna do and when we wanna do it, but we have to do more than what just. Okay, and I'll just make one more comment. Eighteen thousand dollars, okay, send a letter every week from City Hall. I don't need to hire someone for fancy graphics and I, I just think send a letter to every single resident. Is it the folding, the envelopes and putting them in the mail? How, why would we spend eighteen thousand dollars? I, I'm sure, I, and I will defer, I do not have the experience you have. And it was very helpful, Brian, when you said three hundred, or someone said three hundred people called, that's, I didn't, I was surprised to hear that. I know this is expensive, but you can't make people read the mail, you can't make people, and I don't know why we use that. That's a lot. You've been cutting half of them.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's an idea, right, that to help.
I'm not opposed, I, again, you know, I know that I've been learning every day I'm here. And I realize every day how much I don't, but I think that seems like a huge amount of money. Let's, I think, help me understand.
I think part of it might be, or whether this helps or not, is if you look on page seventy-nine, we don't have like five communication specialists. And, you know, they just have a lot more of wealth of resource and knowledge to be able to put this. I mean, they're gonna be able to put up together stuff that makes sense to get up to the residents. We're gonna, we can try our best and in addition to our daily duties, try to send something out. But they've probably done this before and hopefully that, I guess I was gonna ask Jasper, were the eighteen thousand? I mean, I'm sure they've had like similar rollouts in other communities as far as what the right information and how much and what the information should look like. I mean, we can take our best stab at it, I guess, but I mean, they, that's what, they have a team to, to do this and stuff. We don't, we have, you know, Paula does her best as part of her other job duties, right, is basically, right, or Jasper, or anyone. So that's, I guess, how I try to boil it down is that they are able to, to do this and have done this for other communities where we would be doing.
Why? Let me ask, Brian, do you wanna weigh in? Do you have any thoughts?
Uh, I, we can communicate this on our terms, uh, privately or when we, we don't. We're gonna be communicating as, as granted it is calling. So I'm going to set my excuse ahead, I suppose, to, 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 to pass any concerns with the residents.
Okay. And again, um, and I absolutely understand your concern about sending thousands. We're not saying we're going to spend it. And I think we, we can drive what they're gonna do.
Yeah, i- if I may, um, so it is outlined in the task order what the deliverables are gonna be. It's the project website, newsletter, postcard, and then all the social media. That's about half those deliverables are. And then there's one phase five, let's support, that's roughly half. And that's for the day-to-day, hey, we have this question or this thing is coming up that we, we didn't anticipate. It's for that, that's the, that's where, where we may not spend that money. But if something comes up, there's a task order that's associated with this kind of communication project that we can then use. And this is over thirty months. So this, this kind of starts and ends, you know, when, if it would get approved and it's a thirty-month project. So all, you know, two and a half years. Um, it comes out to be, you know, whatever that is, five hundred dollars a month, you know, something like that, six hundred dollars a month. So it's, it's, it's a longer-term project. So it's not a, not a, you know, eighteen thousand dollars, we're gonna spend it in a month, it's, it's over thirty months. So if that helps at all. So basically the, the deliverables that we're talking about are about nine thousand and the other, you know, support piece of the unknown is about another nine thousand.
That's not including the previous.
No, it does not.
It's not, it's not. Much more involved, they're, they're, they're just brainstorming and what words we're gonna put on a piece of paper and then we're gonna tell them we're gonna bring it.
I mean, kind of, uh, y- you know, but they've done this before and they know what works. Um, but really it, it adds this. Yeah. Yeah, and if, and if postage and that type of thing would be included in this, it'd be, it'd be much more. I mean, it, it costs us, anytime we send even a postcard to a resident, it, it costs us about a dollar for printing and for postage.
That's all in public.
Yeah, and there's, you know, twenty, two hundred fifty.
We don't have the staff to put together the, 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 the postcard. So who would design it? What, what information does that have to stand with this really? And then how do you do a postcard to do five or six postcards? And then he has to sit there or Paula has to do this and, and they have to get all the correct information and they have to design it. I mean, um, I don't get it. So I know you're, that's, that's fine, you know. I mean, I just wanna understand more. I mean, I'm asking who's gonna sign it when we can. I, I don't need a fancy logo and it doesn't have to be really pretty if it said, here are ten things you need to know about your water. Why, why are these expensive? I, I don't need a fancy marketing firm to tell me, wow, you know, I, I think we should try it first. I mean, heck, give me the bullet points, I'll draw something up for you the first time, we'll see the expected. I mean, I, I'm, I'm willing to help do this. And I know that there's other cities where there are council members that do this one, because that's their expertise. So I'm not saying it's my expertise, but, you know, we're very, and I so respect you, Madam Mayor, and your knowledge. And you clearly have far more experience than I, however. I do social media every single day and I know what's effective and I know what gets to people. And it's, uh, Facebook pages and Instagrams are free. And I think we can, that would think about it. Thank you, your opinion, please. But also, what is your pleasure? Do you want to, um, hold up, not do this, um, bring that, something else? Thoughts?
Seems like we didn't need it.
Okay. Brian?
Question.
Right, so I, so I'm looking for a motion to, um, uh, approve task order number nineteen for communication and outreach related to the water utility changes. Thank you, Mr. Government, it's our second. Thank you, Mr. Goodry, almost favor, see the five guy, I, I was opposed, and motion passes, uh, three, one, with Miss Lady's intent. So, thank you, and I. So, thank you, and I appreciate all of your, I, I thank you. Um, next we move on to, um, I believe administrative items, staff reports.
I have Metamayor, members of council, um, don't have much other than we're kind of in the, the throes of, uh, the holiday tree lighting planning, um, as a reminder, that's December fourth. Uh, we, we have started having some donations roll in, so we appreciate all of the, the folks that are donating. You know, I think we'll, we'll likely hit our goal. There will be fireworks, we have that agreement, uh, all in place, so that's all, all set up. They, they're, they're fully permitted through the St. Boniface Fire Department, so, um, that'll be good. So we're, we're in the process of planning that. Hopefully we have good weather. It sounds like there's going to be a little shift in our prolonged, maybe summer, um, soon. So we might actually be in winter by the time this hits.
So we have staff coming, so they get in, it is on December fourth from five to seven. It's right here at City Hall or where you found Redneal Store. And then we, um, fireworks, we also have wine beer sales, food sales, bonfire, so you'll leave. Okay, anything else?
That should be it. We do have a party commission meeting on November twenty-fourth.
What's on the agenda for that?
A couple of variances on the condition we used to have.
Anybody in the other hall? Oh, sorry, one second.
November twenty-fourth.
Peter, Peter can do that, thank you. Um, anything else from staff? Um, Danny, uh, call for the work. Are you going to go to the WCCU November?
I was the last one. I have a question. Um, this is the next work session at five thirty or five, this is December.
So it's be a bad, we'll get that updated. Yep.
Thank you. Any, any other remarks?
Kathleen, you know, Kathleen and I, you have to, Jasper, and it's lovely. And we're buying some, people free to follow to the next conference meeting.
Actually, I have something. Yeah, I was just at the, uh, Westside Community Commerce Luncheon and it was, it was jam packed. But one thing that was really impressive was Kevin Boracar spoke about some wonderful things going on. It's going really impressive today. So, um, I was a fellow member, it's really amazing things by all of us. I know, but when, when I say no, I don't mind that. And I'm, you know, okay. All right, and then I'll be attending, um, several Zoom meetings between now and December. Again, with Mayors and Johnson Stewart, and also I'll be with weed next week, this week. And, um, I have been gone for my family's need, um, so we're back. I'm a little bit jet lagged, just a little bit, about three o'clock in the morning right now. Um, so with that, that's all there is. Um, we can do a journey if I have more. Thank you, Mr. Goodry, thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Government, all of the favorites, seen the fight a guy. Uh, I, I was, motion, thank you. Thank you very much and we will see you in two weeks. November seventeen.